All right, I will then call to order the Toledo City Council Public Safety Criminal Justice Reform Committee. I'm your Chair, Chris Delaney. Vice Chair is Council President Matt Jerry. Today, we're going to discuss by Zoom amending the Toledo Municipal Code for Traffic Law Photo Monitoring Device Violations. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Delaney?
Here.
Jerry?
Here.
Adams?
Here.
Hobbs? Ludeman? Melden?
Here.
Whitman?
Here.
Also present, Williams, Moline, Gaddis, and McPherson.
Thank you. Do you want to just go ahead and read the title?
Ordinance 451-20, repealing Section 313.12 of the Toledo Municipal Code and enacting new Toledo Municipal Code Section 303.98, entitled Civil Penalties for Traffic Law Photo Monitoring Device Violations and Declaring an Emergency.
Thank you, and I'll recognize Councilman Ludeman is here now as well. Gretchen, did you want to go with this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if that's acceptable to you and the rest of the committee members present, we would like to briefly run through our PowerPoint presentation, then accept questions if that's acceptable. All right, let me share my screen here. This is always the dicey part. So, members of council and the Safety Committee specifically, Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to discuss in greater detail the proposed traffic camera enforcement program. I would indicate that we have about 14 slides to run through here briefly. Certainly, interrupt at any time if there's any questions. Presenting along with me is Law Director Dale Emsh, Attorney Carleen Henderson from the City of Toledo Law Department, Deputy Chief Mike Trinley from Toledo Police Department, and Sergeant Tom LaForge also from the Toledo Police Department. They are also here to answer any questions that may come up. So let's just get started. Our proposal here is, the goal of the program is to amend the traffic camera enforcement program to be compliant with recent court orders and to allow the opportunity for appeal of the traffic and for camera enforcement tickets into the municipal court. And then, of course, most obviously, to enforce speed limits and red lights that would ensure public safety. We're going to take that last point first and go briefly through some data that we have from the Toledo Police Department indicating intersections where these cameras have been installed. The blue lines indicate pre-installation and the red lines indicate post-installation. With the exception of Airport and Burn, which is, remains a serious concern for the City of Toledo, virtually every other intersection where these cameras have been installed have caused serious injury accident numbers to go down. Accidents where there are not serious injuries, again, Airport and Burn remains a concern, but so does C-Corps and Doran Monroe and C-Corps. Those intersections continue to be concerned, but by and large, accidents that do not result in serious injury have also gone down. You may have seen, there was recently an article in the Toledo Blade discussing that in Lucas County fatal accidents are up by 58% over the same time in 2019. And the cause of those accidents is attributed to speed, failure to wear a seatbelt, and from impairment of either drugs or alcohol. When we saw this article in the Blade, we certainly wanted to be able to digest these numbers just as it relates to the City of Toledo. And so Deputy Chief Trinley is going to comment a little bit more about this, but I will indicate that based on the data that we have from the county, the city data indicates that from January to July of 2020, there were 28 confirmed traffic fatalities, fatal accidents, in the City of Toledo alone. And this is an increase of that, on that same time period of 13, 13 additional, or an increase of 13 fatalities for the same time period in 2019. Forty-three percent of those accidents were caused by, or at least one of the causes was because of speeding. The main thoroughfares, you can see from the charts that we had up here before that there are a number of acts, number of intersections where we have installed cameras based on the data of speeding and accidents. But we continue to be concerned and there continues to be high number of accidents on many of our state routes that many local Toledoans refer to by their street names, which include Central Avenue, the Anthony Wayne Trail, Detroit Avenue, Woodville Road, and many sections along I-475. Deputy Chief Trinley, is there anything you wanted to add to that information?
Yeah, I'd just say, you know, the number you indicated is actually an 87% increase from last year through those six months for fatal accidents. And as you did say, that, you know, a good chunk of those are for speed. A combination of things have happened. Obviously, COVID allowed our streets to become a little bit more, less congested, and we are starting to see a huge increase of speed during that time during the shutdown. And that unfortunately has continued on even after we've started to get back to work. And so now we have much more congested streets with that kind of speed still occurring. So that is continuing to be a problem for us. Also, with us shutting down the program, you know, we're starting to see more speed on the expressway as well. So it's, speeding right now in the city is a major problem for us.
And when Deputy Chief Trinley is discussing shutting it down, just for background information for those that are unaware, is these, these cameras were, have not been in use since June of this year. So the next question, logical question really, is why now? Why do we need to approach Toledo City Council and in fact have this discussion with the residents of the City of Toledo? And that is because to restart this program in compliance with court orders and to make some of the policy and process improvements that we would like to make, our partner agency at Norris needs to begin the programming. And they are not able to begin the programming unless and until Toledo City Council approves this plan. When we talk about programming, we're talking about the civil case management system that Norris is responsible for programming. They have to program all of the computers both at the Toledo Municipal Court Clerk's Office that would allow them the opportunity to do summons, service tracking, case updates, financial tracking, and Ohio Supreme Court reporting for these traffic tickets. The most significant programming need is in the criminal and the traffic system in Toledo Municipal Court. We are requesting that Toledo City Council vote on this ordinance at your next meeting on November 17th, and that would allow us to begin issuing tickets the first part of the year. The program would, would be able to, based on our conversations with Norris and the clerk and the Toledo Municipal Court Judges, Toledo Police, the Law Department, and now with City Council, we believe that we would be able to have full operational shift of the traffic camera tickets to Toledo Municipal Court on or about April of next year, April 1st of next year. All of these traffic tickets, camera tickets, would be filed in the Traffic Bureau of the Toledo Municipal Court Clerk's Office. So basically, and very simply, there are three things. If you break down what happens when an individual receives a traffic camera ticket in the mail, there's three things that could potentially happen, or three ways that a resident could respond to receiving a ticket. They could pay it, they can appeal it, and they can choose to ignore it or take no action. So we're just going to briefly walk through what each of these are and how those decisions would be affected by the Toledo Municipal Court and the Toledo Municipal Court Clerk. The first thing is that they decide to pay the ticket. They would receive a ticket in the mail from Redflex. It just comes in a, in a regular envelope. It has, when you open it up, it has a picture of your license plate, a picture of the vehicle, and it indicates whether you have run a red light or whether you were speeding. It indicates what your speed was, the date and time and location that you received the ticket. If you, the resident decides, yep, you know, I was speeding, or yes, I remember running that red light, or whatever the case is, and they decide they're going to pay the ticket, we believe the process is improved, in fact, by moving it, moving it over to Toledo Municipal Court. And for the simple fact is, instead of just being able to mail a ticket, mail the money back to Redflex, now the individual will be able to pay over the phone, online, by mail, or in person at the counter at the Toledo Municipal Court Clerk's Office. If the resident decides to appeal their ticket, they will, we have set up a process here that will follow all the local rules of the Toledo Municipal Court for appeals. So on or about April 1st, resident may request an appeal of the ticket by filling out the form that will be enclosed with the mailed ticket. So you get the ticket in the mail the same way you would before you even make a decision about what you're going to do. You look at it, and if you decide, for whatever reason, that you're going to appeal that ticket, there will be a form enclosed with the ticket that gives you the instructions on how to appeal it and that you have 30 days to do so. You can mail that form to the clerk of court, you can e-file it to the clerk of court, you can fax it to the clerk of court, or you can deliver it in person. In the mail, you will receive a hearing date, you will attend the hearing, and a finding will be made by a finder of the fact, whether it be a hearing officer or a magistrate in Toledo Municipal Court. We have made a request to the Toledo Municipal Court Judges to set a $40 filing fee for, for the appellate fee to file, to appeal your case. It's important to note here, I think, both for members of City Council and those residents who would be listening in, that this is not a barrier to appeal your case. It is not a fee that is assessed until the end of the case, and it is assessed to the non-pervailing party. So if you have a ticket and you go to Toledo Municipal Court and you appeal it and you win, you pay nothing. The City of Toledo would pay the appellate fee. If you go to Toledo Municipal Court and appeal your ticket and you lose, you pay your ticket cost plus the additional $40. The breakdown of the proposed fee is that $26 goes to Legal Aid and $3 goes to Legal News. Those two first breakdowns are statutory in nature and are not able to be changed. $10 to the court and a dollar to the City of Toledo General Fund. The final scenario is if you receive your ticket in the mail and for whatever reason, we don't read the intent of the individual, merely they take no action or they don't pay. There's a number of things that will happen also, all through the Toledo Municipal Court. Residents have 30 days, as I mentioned, to pay or appeal their ticket. After that, a late fee of $10 will be added, and this is pursuant to Toledo Municipal Court Rule. Forty-five days after the 30 days, so 75 days later, the ticket will be sent to collection per the practice of the Toledo Municipal Court, and it will be collected against the individual civilly. The breakdown of the fee is as, is as follows. We have the current breakdown of 120 and the proposed breakdown of 120. Right now, $30 per ticket goes to Redflex for the administration of the program and for equipment. Many of you are aware that we finance some of our equipment through the use of this $30 fee and other administration, administrative costs, and $90 would go to the City of Toledo General Fund. Moving forward with this new process, $30 would still go to Redflex for the administration and equipment, $5 to the clerk for the computerization fund, $3 to the Toledo Municipal Court Judges Fund, and $80 to the City of Toledo General Fund. I very intentionally skipped that $2 license reinstatement and safety programming part because I wanted to expand on that a little bit. This is obviously something new to the program, and it is a, a public policy choice that the administration is making and asking for council support on. It would be our intention to create an account in the department's finance for that $2 per ticket to go into that fund to pay for license reinstatement programs as well as for safety programming in the City of Toledo. You may remember throughout most of 2019, in partnership with the Bar Association, Toledo Legal Aid, the Ohio Bureau of Motor Vehicles, the Toledo Municipal Court Judges, the clerk, and the City of Toledo, a series of license reinstatement clinics that were hosted in the City of Toledo. We know that the Ohio Bureau of Motor Vehicles can be a complicated and complex and confusing process for residents. It's difficult to work your way through that sometimes as an individual. And we also know that not having a license is a barrier to employment. And so for those reasons, we wanted to try to enforce programs that would help people get their licenses back. The safety programming component is really open to application and as we proceed, ideas that may come forward. It may help us buy equipment, it may help us buy signs, it may help us have in-person programming of some kind for kids as we move forward. And, and obviously, that account, any spending out of that account would come to Toledo City Council as would any account at the City of Toledo. So it's, I, I joke when we talk about this, about it's maybe a little bit of a, of a tough sell or something weird to sell to this body or to residents that there are benefits in receiving a camera issued ticket from the City of Toledo, but we believe there are a few. First of all, there's a consistent and effective speed light enforcement at key intersections and in key zones like along 475 and intersections where the data tells us we need to have some management of the speed and people into the intersection when the lights are red. And consistency obviously is because there are stationary cameras that are there. These traffic camera tickets are civil and they are not criminal. It's not show as a traffic conviction on your driving record. And as a result, they do not impact or do not apply any points on your driver's license and do not impact your auto insurance rates. The final two things are also, I think, obvious but probably important to, to note. We have seen, we have all experienced, I think, seeing someone being pulled over on a busy highway or right off of a busy intersection and the potential lack of safety for both police officers and drivers that would cause that traffic stop to happen in those high-use areas. The traffic, the camera issued tickets do not have that happen. And when a traffic ticket is issued by a police officer, whether speeding or running a red light, stopping that driver and questioning them and, and the process, beginning the process of giving them a ticket by the officer gives that officer potentially, arguably, probable cause to expand the search of the vehicle, check records of the drivers and other things that would extend a potential traffic stop. Obviously, the camera issued tickets do not allow for that either. I mentioned before that there were a couple of proposed process and policy improvements that we wanted to make. We are, really, the administration is taking this as an opportunity to try to improve on some of the things we have heard from members of the public and City Council and from the courts about improvements that can be made to process notice and communication about these tickets. We plan to have a public awareness campaign about the new traffic camera enforcement program and process. We plan to install larger signs and better signs on 475 and other locations that would indicate that your speed is being enforced by, by a camera. One of the ones that we saw that we're very intrigued by is this one sort of in the middle left, which indicates that a municipal speed camera would be coming soon into new areas. Or when this, when and if council approves this, these signs could potentially go up in say, mid to late February, indicating that these areas are going to be used again with traffic cameras. If you look at the bottom right in the school zone section, you can see just that orange, bright orange photo enforced section could be added to school zone signs. And any of these other ones that indicates speed camera, traffic laws enforced or photo enforced, it is only appropriate, we believe, when and if these cameras are going to be used in a stationary way or in handheld cameras, that notice of the drivers, to the drivers is given. It is our intention to increase the use of stat, to increase our reliance on stationary cameras with posted signs, and in fact, it is our goal by the end of 2021 to increase our stationary cameras from 21 to 31. We have answered this question a number of times before, so I will go ahead and add it in here. How would you decide? How would one decide where the additional 10 cameras would be? And that would again be based on the data that is available on, on the dangerous or high-traffic intersections in the City of Toledo. Not only does the Toledo Police Department retain that, that data and look at it, but the Ohio Department of Transportation does as well. Finally, it would be our, our goal to purchase two mobile speed camera trailers. So this is a product that is also available through Redflex that allows for a mobile enforcement of speed. It is not a mobile sign that flashes your speed. We have those. We leave, Deputy Chief Trinley can correct me, but I believe the city has two of those. This is a camera that would be used maybe following up from where those mobile flashing, this is your speed signs would be. It could be used in response to a city council member's request for a complaints received from residents about a high-speed area. It could be used in response to feedback we receive from Engage Toledo about complaints about a high-speed area. So essentially, this mobile camera would be able to be installed on a tripod in a mobile area outside, can be, as you see in the middle picture, can be installed in a vehicle. And it does in fact cover four lanes of road, but it only covers up to 70 miles an hour. So we envision this as a potential benefit to having in residential areas. And that is it. So, Mr. Chairman, I can turn this off and just answer questions if that's okay?
Yeah, that's good. I did want to comment, I, I very much appreciate the fact that, that all the cameras and any new cameras will be in response to the data received. I think that's really probably the most important way to go. I know, I'm sure you, you've probably already been pressured maybe by some neighborhoods or some council members, but it's good to know that, you know, you're going to follow what the numbers tell you to follow.
Yes, and there's a, there, there's a number of agencies, both state and federal agencies that deal with, with driving safety and traffic safety. And one of their best practices, and they recommend to have a quality camera, traffic camera enforcement program, is to use the data to decide where to place the cameras. And so we intend to employ as many of the best practices as we can, and that would be our goal.
Excellent. So anyone have any questions for the administration? I see Councilwoman Katie Moline.
Thank you, Chairman Delaney, and thank you, Mr. Barker, for putting on this presentation for us. I think it really highlights the importance of these cameras and safety to the citizens of Toledo. I just wanted to ask some questions about, it's noted in this presentation, we talk about Redflex, and I didn't see in the actual legislation where we're entering into a contract or an RFP with that organization. So is there going to be accompanying legislation to support what's been presented or?
Uh, I will let Dale or Carleen answer this, but we are, this is not a new contract. We have an existing contract with Redflex. Dale, do you want to expound on that? You're on mute.
Here we go. Sorry about that. We've had a, a relationship with Redflex since we started the traffic camera program, I believe since 2002 is when it began or somewhere in that ballpark. And, and then there have been successor agreements along the way. But we are, we are still in a contract with Redflex and that runs through, I want to say July. I don't have it in front of me, but I think it expires in July, and then we would be coming back to council seeking to, to get a new agreement.
So the contract with Redflex was not affected at all by what the court did in Ohio? That didn't affect the contract that we have?
It, it didn't affect our contractual relationship. It affected them because obviously they were not generating the revenue because our camera program was suspended, I think, and it started in the late June following the Supreme Court decision on the issue of, of how the due process hearing should be carried out, whether it should be an administrative hearing or go through the municipal court.
Okay, so you've got with these new, like the changes in how we're doing the fee structure that is still under this contract, or will there be amendments to it?
No, they, they are, their portion remains the same. So I think that they get 29.75, if I remember correctly, of every $120 citation, and, and that's, that remains the same.
Thank you, Director Emsh. I, I do think that when this contract does come up, we do need to examine it closely. You know, I was doing a little bit of research on this company, and it appears there were many instances of fraud in even other Ohio cities related to corruption and bribery. I just want to make sure that that's addressed and that we're, you know, that we are going through a competitive process when we move forward on the next RFP or the next bidding process with these red light cameras. And maybe even consider the cost or the savings if we could do the administration in-house with Redflex. But it sounds like that's not an option at the moment since we are under contract. Again, I appreciate your response, Director Emsh, and thank you, Mr. Barker, and thank you, Chairman Delaney.
Thank you. Councilwoman Whitman?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Barker, I have a question as far as, I think I might have raised this before when you did the presentation for the foreigner council members for the public awareness campaign. Will that include, I think it's important for the public to know that this is just not about generating fees and revenue. It's also about, we do have a serious issue with accidents. And I, I kind of nod in my head when you talked about Airport and Burn in that area because I often have to go there because of where my children's school are. And so there have been, I definitely can attest, there's been an increase in accidents in that area. Is that going to be included in this public awareness campaign?
Yes, absolutely, and I think generally, both the, the, how dangerous it is to drive at high rates of speed, the danger of not wearing your seatbelt, which also contributes to these accidents, as well as driving with any sort of impairment will be part of any, of the public safety campaign. You know, I think that there, it's, I believe that, you know, that this whole, the money, the notion of a money grab is something that is just not true. If we are doing this program correctly, our revenues will continue to go down with these Redflex tickets because that means that they're continuing to work. They're going to be continuing to make us safer. And we won't be collecting against people because they're not running red lights and they're not speeding. And so, you know, that's the ultimate goal there. And it is also very cost-effective as it relates to, as compared to having police officers in units stationed at locations trying to manage speed and red light enforcement. So yes, all of it will be part of it. We have such good data. We have lots of good information, both from the state and the police department, that we're going to be able to share with the residents about this for sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, and I very much appreciate the point you just made about the public awareness prior to. It's important. I like the signage, Gretchen, that you, you showed, and we talked about that last week. But yeah, I think as long as we can keep the public apprised of what we're doing and what's coming, I think they'll appreciate it in the long run. Councilmember Melden?
Thank you so much, Chair. Just a quick comment, actually. I just want to say that I, you know, I think when, you know, as, as you all know, I've been kind of talking a lot about speeding and related issues for a while. And while, you know, a lot of, I think, the issues around our speed camera program are not necessarily related to what I've been talking about because what I've been focused on is neighborhoods, it is still speeding. And so that's, that's where it's pretty much the same thing. And the reason I, I bring that up is I find this whole conversation to be very, very frustrating because it turns out that there are signs posted all throughout our community, and they're called speed limit signs. And it turns out that this program is completely voluntary by the pressure that your foot puts on a gas pedal at any one time. And I hate to sound like, you know, like I'm going kind of off the rails here, but I, I, I just don't want to, I, I think sometimes I feel like we're kind of having a different conversation, and I'm thinking, what, what is it that we're talking about here? And we're talking about the basic fundamentals of driving safely and operating a motor vehicle safely. That's what we're talking about. Now, with all of that said, Councilwoman Dr. Whitman, I really appreciate the point you made about a public. Councilwoman Dr. Whitman, I really appreciate the point you made about a public communication, you know, strategy because all of the feedback I've heard about this program really comes down to two things. Citizens are mainly upset because they don't know when the cameras are coming. And this is going to solve that. And I think that that type of notice, photo enforcement area head, camera enforced speed area head, whatever that looks like, I think is a really, really important addition to this. And I think that that should address, you know, a, a, address many of the concerns that many of our residents have about what I will continue to refer to as a completely voluntary program. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mullin, is your hand up again?
Yes, I do have one more question, Chair, if that's okay. I can't believe I didn't ask this to start, but what is the overall financial projection of this program, both in the revenue generated and the anticipated costs or expenditures?
I believe that we have in the 2021 budget around four-point-eight to maybe five-point-two projected for the Redflex revenues. Our cost mainly is, is that thirty dollars to Redflex for the administration and payment towards equipment costs. And then some of the other breakdown, I could pull that slide back up if you'd like me to, but that, that breakdown, that what we're taking out of that, the, the hundred and twenty that's going to the court, that's going to the judges for the computerization and their programs, those are our costs, sort of on the front end. Would you like to see that slide again?
I don't need to see the slide again. I, I'm just curious overall in the anticipated expenditures, not per ticket.
I don't know of any other, other costs other than what the breakdown of that is per ticket. I could total that up based on what the projected number of tickets is or what, what we project it to be. I know that our revenues will be, it's around five million in the 2021 budget projected.
Okay, so we don't have the projected expenditures budgeted yet?
As far as expenditures go, I, and, and we'll, we'll check in with the Finance Department to, to see if there's a better answer to the question. But I think really the expenditures are the personnel costs that are kind of unnecessarily quantifiable. It will have an attorney who will be prosecuting these claims. A cost in the court's budget will be a magistrate, which will have to be covered by these expenses. TPD certainly has officers who are involved with the program, but I don't know if there are other expenses beyond that. But we, I'll check in with, with Melanie Campbell and see if we can get you a better answer.
Thank, thank you, Director Amsh. Thank you, Mr. Barker.
Hey, anyone else? Councilwoman Dr. Adams.
Thank you, Chairman Delaney. I just had a question about the litigation related to cost. What has that been to date, Mr. Amsh?
We have not had any direct costs. You know, there, there are a couple of different pieces of litigation going on. We are handling the litigation in-house, and so it's, we don't have outside counsel expenses. We haven't paid any money out. One piece of the litigation is that we are suing the state of Ohio over the, the most recent version of this traffic camera statute that they put into place in 2019. And then we are defending a class action suit, or at least something that has ambitions to be a class action suit in common police court. But that's, we're in the very early stages of that litigation.
Thank you, Director Amsh, and thank you, Mr. Barker, for that very fine presentation. Appreciate the work that's been, you know, done to put this together. And when it, when it relates to safety of our citizens, I think that this is an important thing for us to work out and work through and get into place as soon as possible. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chairman Delaney.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions before we call the meeting here? Okay. Seeing no further questions, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, Mary, we're good to go?
Uh, yeah, I think so. Have fun.
I haven't gotten anything else. Have you or heard from anybody?
Uh, no, not that I know.